Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. The coordinated -- or sorry, committee of the whole. I'll ask if there's any disclosure of culinary interest. If at some point throughout the meeting you find that you do, please declare it at that time. We have a couple of deputations, presentations today, starting with Ellen from our Economic Development Office.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, council members. I'll just get my presentation. There we go. I need to do the slide show. Okay. So I'm just here to give you a quick update about the branding development process that we've been going through and to give you an update. Regional Tourism Organization, RTO-7, on behalf of Wasaga Beach invited proposals for the development of a new tourism brand for Wasaga Beach early summer 2008. A joint steering committee was formed, and this is comprised of representatives of the town, RTO-7, and also the county of Simcoe, who are joint funders in the project. We received five proposals, two interviews were conducted, and the project was awarded to the firm called Kandari. Kandari has 38 years of experience as an independent integrated agency with full services operated in both Toronto and Montreal. They both said they have 80 subject matter experts on staff who are wired to be curious, entrepreneurial in their approach, and who have a passion for building clients, brands, and businesses. It is the most awarded independent agency in Canada. They have a very impressive list of clients, including the ROM, Niagara Economic Development, Toronto Board of Trade, Heart &amp; Stroke Foundation, Direct Energy, Downtown Washington DC, Raleigh Tourism, the Royal Canadian Mint, Canadian Cancer Society, the AGO, Economic Development Canada, and yes, even a country, the Republic of Armenia. The Wasaga Beach tourism brand, this will be the creation of a brand that goes far beyond just a logo. It's an identification of the perceived Wasaga Beach experience, our character, our reputation, our customer service, and our value. This grassroots branding process will develop a brand that differentiates Wasaga Beach from the competition. It'll strengthen our ties with regional tourism organizations, our neighboring communities, and our new brand will inspire stakeholders to engage and will present a vision to which the broader community will aspire. The new brand will connect customers -- will connect us, sorry, with customers on an emotional level. The goals and objectives: Our new brand will create a sustainable entity that will regain our position as one of the best destinations in Ontario and Canada. It will help us realize the highest economic impact and return on investment from the visitor market, which will benefit transportation, accommodation, catering, entertainment, and the retailing sectors. The brand will develop a relevant and inspiring promise that reflects the expectations of the ideal visitor and provide a well-defined position in the marketplace that distinguishes Wasaga Beach as an important destination. It will reinforce the synergy between the beach and the town to create a sustainable entity. Kandari will provide us with a comprehensive brand identity, including guidelines and creative, which may include the logo, which will include the logo, key messaging, and possibly a tagline. And this will revitalize the tourism industry and bring to market the level of product that today's visitor expects. We provided Kandari with a plethora of documents from development, from local tourism, regional tourism, from events, from parks, and a bunch of RTO documents, including their three-year strategic plan that was done in 2014, festival and event strategy, and gave them lots of homework to do their research with. In addition to working closely with the steering committee, the consultants engaged other potential stakeholders in development of the brand strategy. That included town staff from communications, recreation, and I apologize, I should say recreation, events and facilities, and including the event unit. Tourism operators from many sectors were also included: hospitality, accommodations, restaurant retailers, outdoor attractions, cultural attractions, and festival and events. Also engaged were tourism organizations, including the now-retired Tourism Events Advisory Committee, the Chamber of Commerce, Ontario Parks, and the Georgian Triangle Tourist Association. And finally, we will be bringing this to council on two occasions to come. On February 28th, you'll be receiving the strategy report, and on March the 12th, some creative identity and guidelines. There were three phases to the branding process, and we're still in the middle of it. Phase one was called Discover, and during this phase, Kandari analyzed the current state to discover strategic opportunities to drive brand differentiation. Basically, this was who we are and where we want to be, our goals, our aspirations, and potential hurdles. Input into the Discover phase included the background documentation that I showed you, stakeholder workshop, stakeholder interviews, a brand audit which included a comparison to our competition. During phase two, and this is where we are right now, we're bringing the brand to life through strategy and creative collaboration. Kandari is using all the gathered information, the documents, the interviews, work from the workshop, and they will summarize it in a succinct way that allows everyone to express the brand in the same way. We're going to innovate through the agency to articulate the overall brand strategy and positioning, including the brand model, positioning statement, messaging, and the creative. Phase three is the fun part, and it's called Create. And that's where Kandari will develop the brand's visual expression, the overall identity that allows the brand promise and positioning to come to life, where strategic ideas become compelling creative. There will be a new visual identity and design. The brand will have a look at you. You will be receiving brand strategies and positioning. There'll be a strategic deployment plan provided, the design intent of the core collateral materials and guidelines for use, and it will be presented to council on March the 12th. I thought it would be kind of interesting to provide you with some of the findings from the Discover session. A lot of it we already know, some of it is kind of interesting to learn about. People are optimistic and inspired by Wasaga Beach's potential. There are shared aspirations but a lack of unity and collaboration, and there are differing views on the pace of change. The destination and the website promotes our attributes, offerings, and programming, but it's not necessarily differentiating us from the competition. It needs to evolve from a listing of assets to inspiring emotional benefits. There is a legacy of a party town, and it's a barrier for us. The beach is polarizing. We need to have some clarity and alignment on the role of the beach that would allow Wasaga to have a broader appeal. The promises and the reality aren't matching up. Wasaga Beach is trying to be all things for all people. And very interesting, there are as many as six logos that are in use currently, and that's resulting in low recognition out there. So that was kind of interesting. The brand development will be complete by the end of March, early April, and after approval, we're going to launch it and reveal it at the new May-long weekend event, Summer Launch, and we're hoping that council will help us do the big reveal. Thank you, Ellen. Questions or comments from Council Kenny?
Thank you. Ellen, good presentation. And maybe I just need clarification. Is this a new branding for the town of Wasaga Beach, or just the tourist aspect?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It's a tourism brand, and there is thought behind it that it might work well for a corporate brand, but that would definitely be up to council.
Okay, that answers my question.
Okay, Council Watson?
Thank you, worship. It was partly my question. I hope they're not -- well, I hope they're going to market the whole town, not just the main end. We're more than that. I think there's other aspects of the town that need to be marketed. You know, the two biggest things we have going is our world's longest freshwater beach and our huge provincial park, which is very unique, a park within a town boundary, and our trails, cross-country trails, and the environment, and all those good things that go with that. And I would hope that they would broaden the scope so that we're marketing our town for industry, to come in, light industry, commercial things, call centers, everything, to market our town, our business park, so that we, you know, so the whole town is magnified and shown to the world, really.
And through you, your worship, that certainly is our notion through the tourism destination management plan. And currently, it's a bit challenging because everyone does think of just the beach. So we know that we do need to promote our assets and grow our tourism business outside of just the summer season. Our businesses can't survive well with just eight good weekends. So to your point, yes, sir, that's definitely where we're hoping this is going.
Okay, Council Foster?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I was able to sit in on the last presentation on that, which was much more in-depth on this than this. And it really was interesting that aside from -- is the person from Kandari here?
No.
Because he leaned into everything. He was leaning in on every -- but anyway, his point was, some of the competitor -- or competition when they did the analysis included our neighbor to the west, but also included Niagara on the Lake, Halliburton, Muskoka, Prince Edward County, things like that. And to your point, George, and they've really worked on, it's the asset, we're the world's longest freshwater beach, but Toronto has beach, you know, there's beaches all over. So they're going, just having a beach is nice, but you have to get the emotion, you know, where the sunset capital of Ontario, where, you know, you have to get that feeling that it's not just a list of, this is what we have, we have cross-country skiing, we have, you know, this in the summer, that, we have these festivals. There's far more to it. And what he was saying is that they looked at, you know, kind of how we brand ourselves now, and they say, it's a lovely list, but it doesn't get that emotional pull. And I happened right after that to go to Niagara on the Lake, which is, or Niagara region, but it's known for its wine. But their tagline no longer even deals with wine. They own that, so they're dealing with, I forget what their line is, but it's the same idea. You know, our beach is the beginning. That's a given. It's, it's, there has to be that heart pull. And it was very interesting, and I look forward to seeing the final one. But it's more than the list. It's the feeling, it's the emotion. That's what gets people here.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. We look forward to further reports coming. Moved by Council Bollinger, seconded by Council Wells. Be it resolved at committee of the whole, receive a presentation from the economic development officer pertaining to tourism brand development for information.
Thank you, worship. Having heard the question, I'll call for the vote. Council Bollinger?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Bray?
In favor.
Council Foster?
In favor.
Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council Watson?
In favor.
Council Wells?
In favor.
And Mayor Byfield?
In favor.
Thank you. The motion carries on a load of seven in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. Thanks, Ellen. Next, we have a presentation from our planning staff with regard to Marlwood. I wonder where you went. Usually sit on that side.
(noise) So if everybody's explanations are, contacting the town lawyer, he's going to join us on this presentation and help with presentation.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Harold. Are you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, it's Doug. You are in committee of the whole. We have full council, and we have a number of residents in the audience, quite a few residents in the audience with interest in the topic. Can you confirm that you can see the town screen on your website?
Yes, I can see it, but there's a bit of a gap, I think, a lag here.
So we are about to commence the PowerPoint presentation, and Harold, the first, the first tab on the power board is currently displayed. Can you confirm you see that?
Yes, I see it.
So just as a general introduction for committee and for the residents of the room, council had requested an information update, particularly on the issue of the legalities. The residents are calling a covenant on title that would impact the application, could possibly or potentially impact the application for plan subdivision, official plan and zoning amendment that was submitted by the owners of the Marlwood Golf Course. So this presentation is to bring committee up to speed, as it were, in terms of the discussions that have been had to date on the topic with the residents. We hope to share with council as best as possible the opinion of the residents, and also share the background of the application and share with you. And that's why Mr. Harold Watson is with us. He's going to share a legal opinion. And at the end of this presentation, we hope to have committee fully updated with that topic.
Okay, so before we go any farther, I just want to get a little bit of clarity here. Normally, when council gets a legal opinion, it's not normally done in an open session. So I was looking at the CIO because I wasn't aware that we were going to have the lawyer on the phone here today. So can you just explain for everybody here what this process is, because we don't normally do this?
Okay. So the legal knowledge that is going to be shared with us is legal knowledge that we've already shared with the homeowners through a meeting that we had with them in November. So in that sense, it is not closed information. It's basically a sharing of information with them. There was an opinion from the homeowners on how the legalities work based on agreements that exist on title. And then there was an opinion from town staff, which we got through the town solicitor as well. So we had to make sure that it was a valid opinion. So that's what we had hoped to share today.
Yeah?
Thank you. Just if I may just interject for a second. Thank you, Mr. Director. So basically, as this is under an education session for members of council, members of council asked for this as to understand the issue with respect to the legal covenant and the impact with respect to this particular subdivision. And so it was, this is the forum that we're using to educate, and we thought it appropriate that the town solicitor be available because he has been engaged in the discussions, not only with staff but with the residents on this particular matter. So that's why he was asked to attend. Unfortunately, during the timing, he's not local, and so we've asked him to join via this venue. So hopefully, council will be educated with respect to the discussion that's taken place with respect to this particular matter. And then there's some motions and whatnot afterwards for members of council to deal with.
Okay, thank you. And normally, council would get this in closed sessions, so we would understand it before going out to the public like this. So that's why I'm a little bit confused with it. Okay. So again, I'm going to look to our clerk. If a question is asked that we shouldn't be asking of our solicitor, I need you to tell us if we're overstepping.
Yeah, and I'm sure the lawyer would also let you know as well, but we can certainly just...
Okay. Council Foster?
Sorry, just want to make sure. We're receiving this for information, but then there's the, hmm?
Oh, no, sorry.
The resolution related to the back of this, right, 5.1. Just trying to see, is that going to put us in a position? I'm happy to, I'm happy to receive all of this for information. We need it, absolutely. I just want, I don't necessarily want our hands tied that we're pulling a trigger.
And when we get to this portion, we can discuss that further. For now, we just hear the presentation.
Fair enough. We need to.
Doug?
Thank you, committee. The, what we'll do is, Ellen, we will bring us, will walk us through the PowerPoint and provide some background to the committee on the issue itself to provide all, so in this presentation outlined, we're going to look at the, an overview of the development proposal, the milestones to date on the topic. We're going to provide some general themes of the public comments we've received, particularly on this topic, and public comments regarding the specifics of the agreements and how the Marlwood Homeowners Association in particular have built an opinion on how the covenant would work. So we hope to present a fair and unbiased aspect of the public's comments. Through that, we've drawn quotes from documents that have been submitted by the homeowners association to try and make sure that it is a fair assessment of what they're presenting. And Ellen will provide an overview on the agreements and how they relate to the various properties associated with the Marlwood Golf Course, and how those agreements reflect on those. And it's not that clear, so he's going to give us some mapping for us. And on the last bullet, we had hoped to hear from the town solicitor on that approach and that response that the town has had to date on it. So at the end of this meeting, we hope to have a fulsome understanding before committee --
You know what? I'm looking at our clerk, and she is saying she is not 100% comfortable. I'd like to recess. We're going to go talk about it, because this is not normal process.
I don't know what the information is, so it's hard for me to make a decision when I haven't been provided the information.
What I can say, what I can add to the discussion is, there's been correspondence sent from the town already. Nothing new will come from that correspondence that's already been sent from the town to the Marlwood Homeowners Association.
Okay, I'm still, you know, I'm still going to recess it. I'd like to know, as the chair, what's going on in this meeting. There was no, no heads up to me that lawyers were involved or anything else. I think we're going to take a couple minutes so that I can be on the same page as whatever is being presented. Okay, you can go down there, George. Yes, hi, sir. Sorry.
What I can say, what I can add to the discussion is there's been correspondence sent from the town already. Nothing new will come from that correspondence. That's already been sent from the town to the Marlwood Homeowners Association.
Okay, I'm still, you know, I'm still going to recess it. I'd like to know as the chair, what's going on in this meeting. There was no, no heads up to me that lawyers were involved or anything else. I think we're going to take a couple of minutes so that I can be on the same page as whatever is being presented. George? Sorry. Yeah. Okay, so I apologize to the audience. It would appear that some of you probably have the town's legal opinion that they received and council members have not had the opportunity to see that yet or discuss it amongst ourselves. So that's where the issue is coming in here. So I'm going to ask staff to go through the, I guess, the first three or four, whatever, whatever we can do. And then unfortunately, we will have to go in camera, so council can be updated to know where we, we sit as a town. And when we move out of in camera, I would expect that there'll be some motions that we can go through. So Doug, I will pass it back to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. And with that, I'll ask Alan to take us through the PowerPoint and, and the information that's in the PowerPoint.
For the lands that are subject to the applications for official plan amendment, zoning by law amendment, and draft plan of subdivision, can be referenced a few different ways. There's one municipal address of 31 Marlwood Avenue. That one municipal address is identified by four different property identification numbers, all beginning in 58334 and ending respectively in 0249, 0250, 0254, and 02, sorry, 0327. And then, of course, the assessment bill number as well for municipal taxation purposes. And they're outlined in red on the screen. So the development proposal consists of two phases as presented in the applicant's submission. The first phase of, as they've proposed, is a 10 lot phase, which would all involve 10 lots, all proposed to front onto Golf Course Road, roughly in the area shown in yellow. And the second proposed phase would involve 55 lots. That would all have frontage on a proposed extension of Masters Lane, extending toward the southern boundary of the property and then eastward, easterly along the southern boundary toward Marl Lake. So the first phase of the proposal, as I mentioned, would consist of 10 lots, all fronting on Golf Course Road. Lot frontages ranging from roughly 16 meters to approximately 30 meters at largest, typical being about 18 meters, and lot depths of approximately 48 meters. As you can see in the draft plan shown on the screen, the northerly most lot, the one on the right, Lot 1, proposed Lot 1, would be roughly immediately adjacent to existing residential, whereas Lot 10 to the left would actually be divided from existing residential to the south by a piece of lands that I believe is affected by an easement in that location. The second proposed phase of development, as I mentioned, would be 55 lots, all fronting onto the proposed extension of Masters Lane, as shown in the proposed draft plan as Street B. Lot frontages in this phase would range from 50 meters to approximately 31 meters, with the, the same typical lot frontage proposal of 18 meters as compared with the proposed first phase. And the proposed lot depths would be of approximately 35 meters or greater. In addition to that, of course, the Masters Lane extension is proposed. That would go from left to right in this screen, although we're just using standard directions. And then it would also involve a potential road segment going from Golf Course Road, projecting easterly into the, toward the Golf Course property. Past milestones in the processing of these applications to date have included the following. The applications were originally received by the town in July of 2017. In August of 2017, they were deemed to be complete, sorry, deemed complete in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act. In November of 2017, the applicant had provided additional materials, and at that point, the applications were deemed to be completed under the Planning Act. Therefore, as required under the Planning Act, town staff issued the notice of complete applications. After that issuance, errors in the original notice were discovered, which resulted in the revised notice being issued in early January of 2018. The public meeting was initially advertised on June 7th and took place on June 26th. In, in November, late November of 2018, as Mr. Herron had mentioned earlier, town staff met with area residents and the town's legal council. This, and former mayor Cal Patterson was also in attendance at that meeting. And that meeting was scheduled in direct response to request from the area residents. And that brings us through to today, being just a brief presentation to the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
If I may draw your attention to the stack of paper in my hands, this represents the sum of public comments we've received to date. And so I apologize for likely not doing the full breadth of public comments justice in this presentation. I tried to capture what are the general theme areas of those public comments. They're, they're fairly broad and deep in their content. They include comments and such themes as adverse concerns over such important impacts on the environment, such as wetlands and air quality, as well as wildlife habitat and movement corridors. The, the cultural, potential cultural heritage value of the lands, as separate and distinct from the potential natural heritage value of the lands. The lack of need for additional residential lands. The lack of conformity with provincial planning documents. The quality of the materials filed with the applications, with critiques in areas including but not limited to the environmental impact study and the archaeological assessment. Concerns over previous and existing activities on the Golf Course lands, including tree removal, service, and that's in reference, as I understand, to be, associated to the customer service component of the operations, as well as the potential use of ultrasonic equipment. Concerns include about the proposed lot sizes relative to the existing residential lots nearby. The economic impact of reducing the length of the Golf Course. The anticipated effects of construction traffic. The effect of extend, the proposed extension of Masters Lane and the impact on budding landowners near the Masters Lane cul-de-sac, as well as concerns relating to the existence and the effect of agreements registered on title. I bolded that last slide, that last bullet point, rather, as that, of course, is intended to be the focus of this presentation. So as I, as I pointed out earlier, the public consultation process in the processing of these applications has, has, I think, been fairly successful, given the public comments that we've received to date and the level of engagement on the part of community members. Given the, the amount, the volume of public comments we've received and an attempt to provide a representation of a subset of the public comments as it relates specifically to the agreements registered on title, the next couple of slides will provide some select excerpts from those comments as it relates specifically to the, the effect, the existence and effect of agreements on title. In this first slide, these excerpts come directly from a letter from Mrs. Namus Clark, acting president of the Marlwood Homeowner Association. Her comments included that the town entered into an agreement on March 11th, 2003 with Beaver Bay Developments, Inc., the Royal Bank of Canada, and Marlwood Golf and Country Club. The purpose of that agreement was to allow a housing development of 63 homes to be built while at the same time preventing further development on the Golf Course. To that end, and pardon my paraphrasing, to that end, the following clause was included in the agreement, that the developer hereby acknowledges and confirms that it shall not be entitled to sewage slash water capacity beyond those units allocated to the plan. The subdivision agreement dated March 11, 2003 was put on title April 15, 2003, onto the properties of Schedule A, and then provided specific reference to those pin numbers. The agreement, open parentheses, "contract", close parentheses, "to withhold sewer slash water capacity" creates a restrictive covenant on the properties identified by the two pins noted, and included the statement that present council is contractually bound and obligated to uphold and conform to commitments under that agreement. In parentheses, "no entitlement of sewer slash water capacity beyond Plan 51M743", close parentheses, entered into by the town on March 11, 2003. Comments received relating to the existence and effective agreements on title included a, a letter from solicitor on behalf of the Marlwood Homeowners Association, Mr. Maurice Lawton, whose comments noted that an agreement dated March 11, 2002 was registered on title on April 15, 2003, and affects the Golf Course and surrounding lands. The property identification numbers were, provides reference to three pin numbers, with the agreement being registered as instrument number R01109351. That agreement contains restrictive covenants which exist to date. Mr. Lawton's comments included that the restrictive covenant survived the acquisition of the Golf Course by the bank when Marlwood Golf and Country Club, Inc. went bankrupt, and concluded in that respect by noting that the applicant bought the Golf Course lands and was registered as the owner on June 16, 2015, and that the applicant has approached the town to proceed with their development contrary to the restrictive covenants as submitted by Mr. Lawton. Written comments on behalf of or by former Wasaga Beach Mayor, Mr. Cal Patterson, noted that, that submission is to confirm that a restrictive covenant was placed on the Marlwood Golf Course on March 11, 2003 to prevent any further expansion of water, sewer, and housing development anywhere on the Golf Course. And in addition to those comments, the stack of papers I have here includes comment and petition letters received on behalf of over 200 individuals between July and October of 2018, which note that the town entered into a binding agreement between itself and Beaver Bay Development, Inc. on March 11, 2003. The town inserted into that agreement a water slash sewer restriction onto lands owned by Beaver Bay Development, Inc. to prevent further housing developments on Marlwood Golf Course. Therefore, the town cannot give draft plan approval nor issue building permits under those two properties named in Schedule A, all of which was submitted by the signatories to those in excess of 200 comment slash petition letters. This is a custom map that was produced by Public Works GIS staff in an attempt to provide an illustration of the lands that are referenced in those respective submissions. So as we can see by this map... Pardon the, the darkening of the colors. They're a little more vibrant on a different display. But the, the thick red outline is intended to reference the boundaries of the subject lands, 31 Marlwood Avenue, and also show its division into multiple pin numbers, 0327, 0254, 0250, et cetera. This map also shows the lands identified, or created by, rather, Plan 51M743, being the lands in yellow along Golf Course Road, and includes Masters Lane and Marlwood Avenue. And in a, an orange underlight includes reference to the portion of the Marlwood Golf Course lands, the portions that are affected by the current development proposals. At this point in the presentation, Harold, can you please confirm that there's little if no, if any lag time?
No, I think I'm hearing you just directly. Thanks, Alan.
Okay, thank you. So if I may, if I may turn this portion of the presentation to you, and please feel free to direct me to...
No, this is the part where council needs to be updated, what the town, what, what the legal opinion was that the town received, because it's my understanding it was shared with residents, but we as a council have not had it before us at this table for a discussion. So I'm sorry again to the public, but we will have to move in camera to do that. It's moved by Council Watson, seconded by Council Foster. Be it resolved pursuant to Section 239, 2F of the Municipal Act 2001, as amended, the next portion of the committee of the whole meeting of February 7, 2019 be closed to the public to discuss matters relating to solicitor advice regarding the Marlwood development. And I will add that we will come out of in camera again, and you'll be more than welcome to join us. And I would expect that we would have some motions that we would be passing at that time.
George? Thank you. There was a council having heard the question. I'll call it a vote. Council Belager?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Bray?
In favor.
Council Foster?
In favor.
In favor.
Council Watson?
Favor.
Council Wells?
In favor.
And Mayor White-Polson?
In favor.
Thank you. The motion carries on of 07 in favor. Considerable loss.
Thank you. The motion carries on of only seven in favor. Considerable votes.
The thing is, no, I don't use it. Yeah.
Yes.
Actually, it's not recorded anywhere, you can have it.
Yeah.
But also, the folks on this side, so we can avoid any confusion there. Go back to the right.
At least it's there.
Okay, welcome back everyone. We have a motion moved by Council Wells, seconded by Council Kinney. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole received the closed session legally that base for information regarding the Marwood development.
Thank you worship. Having heard the question, I'll call for the vote. Council Bollinger?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Ray?
In favor.
Council Foster?
In favor.
Council Kinney?
In favor.
Council Watson?
In favor.
Council Wells?
In favor.
Mayor Byfogee? Thank you. Motion carries on a vote of seven in favor and zero.
There's a motion moved by Council Kinney, seconded by Council Wells, that the committee of the whole received the manager of planning and developments update pertaining to the Marwood development covenant update for information.
Thank you worship. Having heard the question, I'll call for the vote. Council Bollinger?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Ray?
In favor.
Council Foster?
In favor.
Council Kinney?
In favor.
Council Watson?
In favor.
Council Wells?
In favor.
Mayor Byfogee?
In favor.
Thank you. Motion carries on a vote of seven in favor and zero.
Moved by Council Wells, seconded by Council Kinney. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole received the report dated February 7, 2019 on applications for official plan amendment OP 0217, draft plan subdivision PS 0117, and zoning by law amendment Z 1117 submitted by TPC at Marwood Inc., and that committee of the whole recommends to council that town staff be directed to report to development services section of coordinated committee with a recommendation on the applications identified by file numbers OP 0217, Z 1117, and PS 0117. Only once outstanding questions and unresolved matters relating to the proposed development, including but not limited to those listed in the staff report dated February 7, 2019, are answered or resolved to the extent of enabling agency and town staff to evaluate whether the applications are consistent with and conform to applicable policies and plans. So for the public, we've realized that there is a number of unresolved matters, too many for us to make a decision on anything today, so nothing will happen until this comes back to development services with all of the issues before us. Council Wells?
And your worship, I may add that that statement of only once outstanding questions and unresolved matters related to proposed development includes the legal issues, the legal matters. That's some of the unresolved issues. So until those can be resolved one way or the other, it will not be coming back.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else take the call?
Thank you worship. Having heard the question, I'll call for the vote. Council Bollinger?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Ray?
In favor.
Council Foster?
In favor.
Council Kinney?
In favor.
Council Watson?
In favor.
Council Wells?
In favor.
Mayor Byfogee?
In favor.
Thank you. The motion carries on a vote of seven in favor and zero.
And again, thank you to the public. We wanted to come out of in camera so we could read those motions for you, but we do have another matter to deal with in camera, so we have to go back in. Moved by Council Wells, seconded by Council Bollinger. Be it resolved the pursuit to section 239, 2E of the municipal act 2001 as amended to the next portion of the committee of the whole leading of February 7, 2019. Be close to the public to discuss matters relating to litigation or potential litigation.
Thank you worship. Having heard the question, I'll call for the vote. Council Bollinger?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Ray?
In favor.
Council Foster?
In favor.
Council Kinney?
In favor.
Council Watson?
In favor.
Council Wells?
In favor.
Mayor Byfogee?
In favor.
Thank you. The motion carries on a vote of seven in favor and zero.
And we'll take a break till 3 o'clock and then we'll come back.
In favor.
Council Wells?
In favor.
Mayor Byfle?
In favor.
Thank you. The motion carries on a vote of seven in favor and zero.
And we'll take a break till 3 o'clock and then we'll come back.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Counselor Foster.
In favor.
Counselor Kenny.
In favor.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you Harold.
Thank you all very much. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
But Stan, you made twelve bucks.
Yeah, right. Did I make that much? I don't think I did.
That wasn't snoring. That was the meter running in the background.
That's right, yeah.
But Stan, you made twelve points.
Yeah, right. Did I make that much? I don't think I did.
That wasn't snoring. That was the meter running in the background.
You got the same...
I got the same.
That's right, yeah.
All along my goal.
By the Easter.